Why is it going to cost $10,000 to advertise it?
Well, it's 10,000 to promote it and then also to get it up and running, so stand it up. So, you know, that's just kind of a rough cost in terms of when you look at traditional media and social media in terms of promoting the program.
I mean, I guess my concern at this point now is we're paying $50,000 but only getting $40,000 out to the citizens. And that's, I don't know, that's unbudgeted on top of the $75,000 that we gave a couple of months ago. That wasn't budgeted either. And then I'm assuming that we're about to go into budget season and there's going to be more requests for this next year, that I guess we need to make sure that staff sits down with these guys on the front end and make sure we don't put ourselves in this position next year. I think that the intent behind this is good, but this is all just exploratory work that we don't know even what the return on the investment is.
Just for clarification, the $75,000 was budgeted?
The additional $75,000 was?
It was.
All right, thank you.
All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Through with discussion?
Let's move again.
So, let me understand clearly because it was said that all these businesses out here really need this money. How much money are we talking about giving?
We're only talking 50,000 total. And it would be 15,000 for a general business, 15,000 for a minority-owned business, and 10,000, up to $10,000 for a, what I call a startup or somebody who's trying to bring an idea to the marketplace.
So they don't need the five-year?
No, they do not. They would not meet that five-year credit because it's a new idea that they're trying to bring to the marketplace.
Well, again, I support your idea. I support the process more than, you know, just reaching into the city fund balance to do this, but I'm not going to oppose this because I do believe it is important. I just, I wish that we would have had the majority of council supportive of following the process. And it's a little concerning to me that that's not the case, but be that as it may, I support the program.
Mayor Proton?
I just want to say one thing that we talk about transparency in this discussion that we just had. I mean, can't get more transparent than that. So it's transparent, we did it in front of everybody to see, not trying to hide anything. It's a good program. Some of us disagree on when to fund it, but we're very transparent.
Thank you. No other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Mayor, before you go into the item number two, Councilman Turner had an item, a question on item C, and I want to give him a chance to do that because the event services director is here. He had a question for her.
It was just a statement. I'll wait to public comments.
Thank you.
Are you ready, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Consider resolution authorizing a contract for property insurance coverage for various city-owned buildings and assets. It's time to renew our policies on our city-owned buildings and assets. I'm going to pass this to our city attorney, but we also have Hickenbottom, Port Arthur, who's our broker for securing cities' property insurance to speak to us today, so.
So at the podium, Mayor, we have our liability administrator, Marissa Arsenault, joined by Joe Bass and Eric Sims, who, as manager said, are brokers with Hickenbottom. Passed around the proposed contract for council to review. I want to kind of just set the stage for our brokers that this was a very hard insurance year for us. It's becoming harder for the city to retain the amount of coverage that we've had in the past. And just like with every other industry, our insurance premiums have gone up. So there, what that equates to is essentially less coverage for more money. But Hickenbottom has been very diligent in working to get the city the best coverage for our money. And with that, I will throw it over to you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Hickenbottom, as you all know, has had a very longstanding relationship with the city of Beaumont. And it's with great empathy that I stand here before you with this year's proposal. If I could borrow a term from the financial industries, you got bull markets and you got bear markets. Well, in the insurance, you got hard markets and soft markets. This is the hardest market that we've seen in the last 100 years. The capacity for insurance, especially cat prone insurance in the property markets, has essentially tripled in cost in a matter of a year. And what we've seen is the insurance companies that are still in the marketplace are choosing the cream of the crop, the best constructed building, the further away from the coastline you are, that, you know, they're cherry picking the best of the best. Now, I love this city, don't get me wrong, but if you're an insurance company and you're looking at the city from a concentration of risk, we have a large concentration of buildings in a small area that one hurricane could greatly affect. And with that being said, these carriers are, they're going up on the rates, plain and simple. And the other thing they're looking at is building valuations. In a matter of 10 years, we've never adjusted the valuations on the buildings in the city of Beaumont. And these carriers are all running modeling reports, and they have determined that the city was undervalued by about $100 million. And they have made those corrections in order to even present a policy to renew. So it's certainly not lost on us. We've talked about some disasters. One gentleman earlier was talking about a disaster and the likelihood of a tornado or a high-wind event and things like that. And if I, if I could just throw this little extra tidbit in there, when you're talking about adding $3 million, somebody's got to insure that. So if that's factors into any other decisions, that's an important piece to consider as well.
And if I may, it is less coverage than what we had last year, but it is enough coverage to cover us in the event that we had another Harvey situation. So it's not ideal, but it is enough to get us through another situation like Harvey.
And then some, quite honestly, if we pulled the losses for the city of Beaumont over the last 10 years, you have about, well, we have two recent losses that aren't factored, but it's just north of 3.3 million in 10 years. What you have here is $50 million worth of coverage, and that's, we feel very adequate for a major catastrophe situation.
So you said our values went up over $100 million?
About 80 million.
80 million? But then you said our coverage went down? Can you explain that?
Yes, sir. These carriers in this market are, they're essentially combating this hard market in three ways. Number one, they're going up on the rates. Number two, they're running all the modeling reports to make sure that the buildings are evaluated accurately. And number three, we're having more carriers, sorry, we have more carriers on a policy layering on top of each other to build to those limits. So essentially, we have more carriers than we've ever had in the past, all taking smaller bite-sized chunks of the risk. And that's, you know, for their survival. So what we did this year is we marketed your insurance more aggressively than the city has ever been marketed. I can promise you that. We went to 47 markets that are still in.
If you look on page eight, it'll tell you all of the carriers that they went to and what the result of those inquiries were.
And, sorry. You have another question that, per the resolution, so this policy renewal is May the first, today's May the ninth.
That's correct.
Are we just now seeing this?
So just for clarification, the insurance policy will backdate to May the first. We haven't had any loss between now and May the first. When we went up for renewal, there was a claim that was submitted. We had damage to the art museum's roof, which again required them to reassess and reevaluate the city's.
Insurance.
Insurance policy. So normally, this would have come to you at the end of April, but like I said, we did have a claim that was submitted late to mid-April, which upheld the process.
So one other question. So you said we've had 3-point-something million dollars worth of claims over the last, how long?
10 years.
10 years.
10 years? 3 million over 10 years. So have we looked at raising our deductibles?
We did.
They did.
We raised our deductibles. We assumed to more risk going forward. Our deductibles for the amount of property we have was significantly lower. And when we came back with the initial quotes that you see before you, we requested that they go back and say, hey, if we decided to take on more risk, raise it higher, would that be more beneficial to the city? And at that time, Mr. Sims said, you know, it really wouldn't matter. We're just in a volatile area. This area is hurricane-prone and the market is becoming more risk averse. So we have did what we could to mitigate the potential increase. And I'll tell you that it's a lot lower than initially expected, and our deductibles are slightly higher.
And the majority of the carriers that we normally deal with, or even if you want to look at page eight, it'll tell you that most of them were not really willing to give us a quote because of our location and the risks that they would carry with us being in this location.
All of those that say location, that's.
Each, also, that page that she's referring to tells you if they quoted, why they declined, if they were not competitive. And just so you know, a lot of the quotes that we would typically not consider as being not competitive, so if it's not competitive, it was like way out there. But a lot of the quotes that we accepted this time would normally be not competitive in previous years. It's just, that's why we have a more layered policy to allow multiple companies to take on smaller risk to provide the coverage that we need.
So is this across-the-board, industry-wise?
Yes, ma'am.
It's just not Beaumont?
No, ma'am. So I can tell you, the last conference that I went to for risk management, one of the classes, we were discussing about, there was a major surplus line that pulled out of this area. And so that then reduces the people who are willing to cover us. It's just across the board.
Correct.
Essentially, what we have in years past, if we would have gone to all these markets, we could cherry pick our favorites to build the layer the best possible way. What we have this year is us begging and pleading all of them for, to even contribute to the tower. And unfortunately, you can hate the message. I hate delivering the message. But the market, and to answer your question directly, yes, we're seeing this all across the board. Every business owner in Southeast Texas is feeling the same.
But even our homeowners.
Correct.
Yes, I tell people, we do not save the best rates for ourselves. My wife had a stroke when she saw our homeowners' insurance as well.
He was just talking about that last week.
And I also don't want you all to think that they get paid based off of commission. So we pay them a one-time fee for the agency fee, and that's it. So it doesn't matter if they quote us extremely high or extremely low, their payment always stays the same, so they don't benefit from the insurance policies increasing.
Well, too bad you didn't, because you would have had a big check.
We understand.
If there are no additional questions that relate to a claim, I think council should do a motion. And if you have further questions for staff that we can answer, I did want them to have an opportunity to kind of explain the quote that was before you prior to you making a motion to approve or whatever.
And I can't answer anything that you guys need to answer.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call for the motion. May I have a motion, please?
I'll have to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Well, at this time, if you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk at the front of the room. She will call your name when it's time for you to make public comment. Green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes. The red light will be your indication that your time is up. Thank you.
Dylan Richardson, 4575 North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening. My mother never really had good things to say about politicians, but I'm happy to say that I can disagree with her sentiments now. At one point or another, I've been confronted by each of you in hopes to find solutions to the problems I've spoken on previously. I hope that through these encounters, true action is taken. I hope relationships with the necessary parties are formed and that all egos put aside in the pursuit of accomplishing these endeavors. Councilman Neeld spoke on his trip to Waco, Texas, to tour Baylor University in his public response a few short weeks ago. He spoke on the need for Beaumont to look at cities like Waco and their development of their respective riverfront and the areas surrounding the university. Unfortunately, nothing has been contributed to this conversation since. I would like to substantiate Councilman Neeld's statement by saying that Beaumont's GDP is falling year by year, while cities like Waco and College Station are steadily rising. Also, Baylor University's endowment is 20 times that of Omar's, while Texas A&amp;M is 135 times that of Omar's. I believe that any sustainable future of this city and this university relies on the willingness of the council to work as a cohort with the local university's administration. Finally, one of the council made the comment to me Saturday that if the current mayor-elect wins, he better fix everything that his predecessor messed up. I would like to say that I hope one is judged on his actions and not on his ability to right someone else's wrongs. I also implore each of you, who are angered to not have gotten the endorsement of the fire and police department unions, that you put your egos to the side and still work to solve the issues at hand for the betterment of the lives of the true heroes of this city. I'd like to thank each of you individually for our personal conversations and congratulate many of you on your reelection. Mayor Mouton, I'd like to thank you for your service these last two years, and I do think you show an example and you have set a model down for students to go through BISD and just in this city and be able to accomplish anything. I'd like to thank Councilman Mike Getz for the conversations we've had, and I'd like to also let him know that we are still praying for his wife. Councilman Turner, thank you for your conversations. Councilman Neeld, we haven't spoken much, but you as well. Councilman Felchard, I'd like to thank you for welcoming me and my girlfriend and I into your church. And Councilman Sammy, I'd like to thank you for being such a good father to my friend here, Christian Gilroy, the student Biden president of Omar. And so, thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you.
Charlie Crabbe, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilman. Let's see, city manager and department heads, it is another nice day in Beaumont. Congratulations to all the reelected members of council. Mayor Mouton, I would like to thank you especially for your work and service for the benefit of the city of Beaumont and its citizens. You have worked to improve Beaumont and with new projects, improvements, and for seeking federal and state funds for the benefit of the city and the citizens. The city TV channel with its informative interviews are very helpful to everyone wanting to learn of city services and programs. With your enthusiasm, I imagine I will hear of you helping in other public services of some type, or maybe you'll be coming back to the city council. If you, if you need some travel suggestions and have not visited the national parks of the western USA, I recommend spending some time traveling, visiting Grand Canyon, Yellowstone, and Yosemite National Parks, to name a few of my favorites. I have other recommendations if needed. Have a nice life. Let's see, I should have something else. I've got half my time left. Oh, yes, Mayor Mouton, I go along wholeheartedly in remembering the teachers we met in class during our school years. My favorite teachers were not available today. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Mr. Simon, I don't have a first name, 2341 Broadway, Beaumont, Texas.
How y'all doing today? Mr. Samuel, you know my mother, Sandra Carter, Willie Carter, my father. To the students, y'all was born great, be great. If you fall, you get back with greatness. Play it for us, please. Okay, Mr. Turner, Councilman Turner, always calling you for something else? It's your turn for that chair. You got to put in the footwork. You got to put in the footwork, Mr. Mouton. We need enough footwork. With the people, put in the footwork. Come see me. You can have this power though. Now, my problem was, it's a commercial on TV. Clean up Beaumont, how many people seen it? The commercial, the dude rapping, okay? My daughter went to McFadden Ward House on a field trip, and they told her they treated her slaves good. I said, what they told you? Every time she see the commercial, at the end of the commercial, they show McFadden Ward House. How many of you do know your history of Beaumont, Texas? Huh? How many of you know your history? Old Town. Beaumont is named after a woman. Old Town, McFadden Ward House, black people had to wear dog collars. Now, why is that house on that commercial? Huh? Huh? I don't justify that. Huh? Seventh Street and Calder. Seen all them people was there? All them people used to stay on the side of the road, Seventh and Calder? That's my rock. I make them all move. I say, so many people die for us in this country? What y'all doing in Land Hill? Huh? What y'all do, that's what I begging people for? Huh? Why? Why? Beaumont PD, laugh in my face. I pay taxes, right? They're public servants. I say, y'all public servants? Inshallah, y'all work for me, I pay taxes, they laugh in my face in front of rank and say, we don't work for you. I say, what? I say, what? Listen, critical thinking. How many took a critical thinking course in college? I did, with my wife. I've been with her for 25 years. My kids have to walk these streets. That's what cops need to learn, critical thinking. Huh? We see Pledge of Allegiance, right? We seen the National Anthem. How many, how many black people in here know the Black National Anthem? Raise your hand. Huh? 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 You don't know? Huh? Huh? Word for word, I had to learn it to graduate from high school. I graduated in 1991. Look, it takes a village to raise a kid. A village. I was calling you, Mr. Turner, about my son, right? You told my wife, step aside, let me handle him. Guess what? He's better. Then some gentleman came in, his coach, sorry, handled my son, right? He's better. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Samuel, I'll be calling you because I'll talk to you. Thank you. And I'm a black business owner. Thank you. Thank y'all very much. I waited a long time to do this. Thank y'all.
Vernon Durden, 16436 Westberry Road, Beaumont, Texas.
How you doing? First, congratulations to Robin Mouton for making history, for showing little black girls they can be mayor. We're forever indebted to you for that. First. Last week, I came up and spoke about sending my emails to all the city council persons to have a meeting with the city council about demolition. I'm yet to hear of a date to have that meeting. So please get back with me soon. There's a statement made last week that there's no perfect ordinance made by Mr. Boone. Thank you.
Cheryl Jackson, 862 Porter Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I've been to two schools today, so I am excited about Teachers Appreciation Week. However, I would like to thank each teacher, if we still have some here, for what they did for us, for us, our education, motivating us and loving us. I was here prior talking about getting a petition for Coach Sweat. I am here again with the petition, the signed petitions from the residents on Jackson Street, the 700 to 800 block. I mentioned before, he was more than a coach, he was a father. He had an old Scooby-Doo van, I don't know if y'all remember those vans, where he took the kids in that van and took them to games, practice. He was there for all, to the children. We cannot let this man go and not honor him some kind of way. When I say he was a father to me, he was a father to me as well as every other child. I mean, he was with BISD for close to 50 years. I didn't have a big issue in getting the petition signed by the residents. However, the community wanted to come, we would have had thousands of votes. That's the impact that Coach Philip Sweat had on the community, on his students. So I am here with the petition. I will hand it over, I think, to Ms. Bruiser. Do I hand it over to you? That's the next step. Whatever steps I have to go through to get this done, I will. And I think a few of you all know Coach Sweat personally, and we knew him personally, great man. We do appreciate our teachers. Like I said, I was at two schools today, and when I walked in, I had no idea I knew all these people. Because when you're there, constantly there for the children, of course, you're going to be there for the teachers. So I'm asking, again, I've got it signed, I'm excited, I'm just waiting for Coach Philip Sweat to have his street. Thanks.
Thank you.
Addie Allen, 9695 Grove Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Council, city manager, and all other officials, Council. I stood here last week and there was not a tornado. And of course, today, there was a presentation, and it saddens me that we have an emergency plan in the city of Beaumont by Code 191038, if you want to refer to that, that there should be an alarm system within your emergency plan. I was disappointed that the emergency plan was not reviewed today. However, there was some skewed information that was given. And thank you, Mr. Turner, for saying that all requests that our people that stand up here should get a response. I have not. But the evacuation plan should be written, there should be elements that include like the past fireman, Dureo said, evacuating and did a good plan, did a good job of that. But then there's also alarm system within the evacuation plan. There is training. So I'm going to read my notes because I know three minutes is paramount. I do not know at one time, when you start talking, if you finish your sentence, that you'll be allowed to. And I do want to know at some future time that the mayor and council can. And I do want to know at some future time that the mayor and council can allow more time. Congratulations on all of your winnings, and I wish you the best, Mayor Robin Muton. Okay. So sirens is within an emergency plan. Eighty decibels is offensive to the ear. If you're in your home, you can hear a hundred fifty. So if you have insulation or whatever you have, anywhere, in any place, you don't have to be outside to hear that. And I heard that today. There were four companies that I submitted. There was one presented, and I think that information was skewed. So there was a survey done to raise hands on how many pet cell phones. That is not adequate in a federal emergency plan. A siren can move from one side to the other, and they can be battery operated. They can be heard throughout Jefferson County in the information that I submitted. The other thing is, training is paramount. And I heard someone from this podium say, people wouldn't know anyway if they heard it. That's why you have training. That's why with the civil service, people went to meetings and they trained other people to know what that sound meant. So to me, that was insulting. But TV and radio cannot be a source for City of Beaumont. And I'll finish next week because I've been doing this two years.
Ms. Addie, go ahead and finish because we've had a workshop today, and I know you weren't here early. Go ahead and finish.
Okay. So two years I've stood up here. TV and radio is not a primary source for city officials to depend on. You are charged for keeping this city safe. We've had three tornado warnings this year. Fortunately, yesterday, the weather system came across the cell phones. Everybody didn't have cell phones. I've talked to several people, didn't even hear it because they were on the road. If we had had a siren, they would know, oh, my God, what's going on? It's not only tornadoes, hurricanes, we have chemical plants, and we could have some mass destruction. We could have events like was in Allen. So everything is not tied to just tornadoes with this emergency system. iPods, when used to be alerted, it says, but cell towers go down, websites go down, spectrum has gone down this year. Expensive, I don't know how many lawsuits we paid for, but for people that pay taxes, this should be paramount. In Nome, two-twenty-three, a tornado touched down. Nome, Tyler, Texas, Dublin, Texas, tornadoes are hitting Texas. So what are we waiting for? And some people don't know what shelter in place means. It's our job, the city job, to tell people what shelter in place, so don't discount people. So I'm saddened today that this conversation has been allowed to be had on a skewed basis. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Addie.
James Eller, thirty-five-eight-seven East Lucas Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
I want to strike it. I found out the information I was sent, and it had all the links and had all the account codes and everything for the property. I want to make sure that it was correct. I mean, what they said, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars due on that property. So everything's a go on G, item G. I did want to point out authorization of the execution of the agreement of the private crossing with BNSF Railroad Company. If somebody could get back to me, I think that that was referring to back there. As of BNSF, we have asked multiple times for the Hillbig and the East Lucas pedestrian crossway, and we would hope that they would come to the table as they're getting things done. If we could get things done for the pedestrians, the handicap, the ADA requirements that need to be taken care of at multiple railroad tracks, also on Washington Boulevard. I would ask y'all to look into that. I do want to push for it, that really touches the minority community while you're still here, Mayor Muton. We do need body worn cameras still accessible to the public as of demand on Open Records Act. I would ask for predominantly, or majority-minority council to push for that while you're still here. I would also like for the ADA compliant, like I say, completion to the sidewalk to the thirty-six million dollar projects of Washington Boulevard. I would also look for no other stores or restaurants be able to have deed clauses that prevent food growth and stop or produces food deserts in less impoverished or impoverished communities around Beaumont like HEB did for thirty to fifty-five years, depending on which one is the accurate information on that. I would also look for three-oh-four Pearl Street right here. That's going to be a Tom Flanagan Goodhue Development LLC property. It's still being accessed. It had a fire in it on April fourth of twenty-twenty-two. It still hasn't been red tagged. I know there was a house behind me that was red tagged, and that's a homeowner. They were red tagged within months of having their electrical issues there. I don't know how we're allowing millionaires to own these properties and not actually contribute to making our city better by protecting the properties, by closing them up. And also, like I said, the city to go through with the departments to go ahead and make sure that they follow the ordinances, the codes. If they're not going to do it, then we need to demolish them the same way that we're going to red tag homes and attempt or threaten individuals with five years and this and that. This individual has gone for a whole year without any actions on that particular property. And there's other properties that are owned by that same individual. If we can give same equity to the citizens as well as the millionaires or thousandaires or whatever the man's bank account is, if we can look into making sure that everybody is created equal and treated equal in the city, I would sure, I would surely think that everyone would be happy with that. So I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eller.
Kenneth Earls, twelve-sixty-five Condon, Beaumont, Texas.
The young men that came up here from Lamar University. The first place that we need to start is an incubator for the creation of new technologies in other places. If they can do it at Stanford University using Apple's money, we can do it here. The city should be now helping those young men in the future create the new technologies, the new venture capital of the future for Beaumont, Texas. Hopefully, one of these days, the name Lamar University will no longer exist for a president that killed Indians and enslaved black people. It'll be called the University of Texas at Beaumont. We'll be in that hundred billion dollar endowment. Right now, there's a city just a hundred miles away that is now trying to get into that University of Texas endowment. They know what happens when that money hits their town. Lamar is getting a small smidgen piece. University of Texas of Beaumont would get, I would say, hundreds of millions of dollars. Look at UTA. Look at UT Rio Grande, UT El Paso, San Antonio, Tyler. Those cities are reaping the rewards of being in that endowment. And if we don't do those things, if we don't create the things that is going to make Beaumont great in the future, and when I say the future, I'm not talking about tomorrow, I'm talking about twenty-five, thirty years. We may not be here to achieve those accomplishments, but our children will be here. I have a love for Beaumont. I grew up here. I went to Forest Park High School. And Mr. Stansberry, who was our history teacher, our government teacher, he made sure that we were knowledgeable about civic endeavors. He made sure that we had a great love for this city that I call my home. I didn't come here to live, I came here to die. I am that salmon that went away for forty years, and I've come back here to tell you that you need to leave this city and go and look at other places that have...
Finish your sentence.
You need to leave here. They told you that you need to travel, Robin, mayor. I love you. You're a wonderful female. You need to go to Europe, and you need to go to Asia, and you need to go other places. And imagine what this downtown could look like because you live, you have a river running through it. That river is worth more than ten billion dollars. When I say that you need to have lobbyists in Washington, DC, the military, make a think tank at University of Texas at Beaumont and have those individuals enter the halls in Washington, DC. Those men would get immediate effect. We, this city sits within twenty-five miles of all the major refineries in America. Forty-seven percent of our petroleum is created here. We're more important than Chicago. We're more important than New York. We're more important than Los Angeles. When we have a cold, the whole, all of America suffers. So you have to reimagine what we need and what we have to have in the future. And I will continue to talk about this. You need to have meetings, the city manager, the city attorney, and the council member, the future mayor.
You need to step up and start looking at the world out there because some of us have been there for a long period of time.
So you can only address your comments to council and not to the audience?
Okay.
Thank you.
I wanted you to finish your sentence.
I know I wouldn't be on, but I'll continue with this. There's a world out there, and we need to be about that world. There's, the military had eight-hundred, eight-hundred and seventy billion dollars.
You're going into another subject. I just wanted you to finish your sentence. Thank you.
John LeBlanc, twenty-two-sixty-three Brooklyn, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I was listening to them talk about the alert system. There's got to be a way in this technology. Yeah, the cell phones is great. However, there are certain areas you can't bring your cellphone. And me, when I'm out in my garden, my cellphone is not out there. Otherwise, it'd be planted, and I'll be digging it up later. There's got to be a way for a hybrid system of both digital and sirens. We have all these schools around here that has a public address system. I'm sure they're tied into a computer somewhere. Somehow or another, that there's got to be a way for you to match and tie all of them together. Because I know when I'm in Charlton Plaza neighborhood, I hear Charlton Plaza's announcement in my house. When the Port of Beaumont has their siren go off, I hear it in the house. Of course, when mobile goes off, I hear it in the house. There has got to be a way for us to network them all together. And the speaker systems are there that would reduce how many speakers you need for the City of Beaumont. Then you would only have to bridge the gaps in between those areas. You also have speakers at the fire stations. There's got to be a way for y'all to bridge it, and someone out there has done it. We just have to look into it, and that would cut the cost dramatically. There's apps out there, there is all kinds of things. I did electronics for thirty-four years. There's apps for everything nowadays. All right?
Thank you.
I think it's Tony Carrier, forty-two-forty, Anias, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, everyone. I'm so happy to be here today, so happy that this was the last final. Thank you, Jesus. I'm the youngest student at Lamar University technology-wise. Anyway, I just want to congratulate everyone on their win, and especially the mayor, because I know you, your loss, but not to congratulate you on your loss, but how you lost. I've never seen anyone fight as hard as you fought. You know, you did a good race, you ran real hard. And I think that God know how to give his children rest. You need to take a rest, baby. You were working so hard. I mean, my God, you made me tired. Anyway, I'm going to tell everybody up here, including my guess, that I will be bringing cookies. When is the last day? The last day for your term, sweetie? When will you change seat?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday? Okay. So I will be bringing cookies because school is out, and I won't be so busy. So to everyone again, congratulations on your victory, okay?
Thank you.
And I will be at your church. All right? You said front, you said front seat? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And if our proceeding, the mayor that precedes you do half as good a job as you have done, he will do a good job. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Now's the time for council member comment, and I will start with Mayor Pro Tim Durey.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to congratulate all the teachers. I've said this to many teachers, I think they should be the highest paid state employees for everything that they go to, not only their teachers, sometimes they serve as parents, mentors, things like that. Also, Mayor, Coach Nolan was my football coach, and Ms. Ladue was my English teacher. I'm glad she wasn't here, she might have remembered some of the stuff I did when I was in high school. But congratulations to all of them, and especially your teachers that came up, that taught and still teaching. I had that too, where I've actually had one of my teachers teach my grandkids. So they've been teaching for a long time. And also, Mayor, I just want to thank you for your service, for your leadership, for being my mentor and showing me a lot of stuff because I thought I knew everything until I got in this seat, and then I found out I didn't. But I know a lot now, a lot more now than I did two years ago. And for your time and for being like my big sister. Just appreciate it. And you enjoy yourself and do some traveling, enjoy those grandkids. But, and please, don't keep calling and bothering your councilmen.
Thank you. Councilmember Gitt.
I want to congratulate Boys Haven on their crawfish festival that they had this weekend, as well as Sam Michael's Greek Orthodox Church on their Mediterranean Festival. Both events were successful and well attended. Congratulations to my fellow council members that won reelection and to Mayor Muton. Thank you for your service. Thank you for working with me to help move Beaumont forward.
Thank you. Let's remember Turner.
Robin, you know how I feel. I got more I'll say about that next week. But we talked about a projector earlier in the city facility. I think it's very important that we kind of look at it in the future at the event center. We got those two small TVs, and then every time we do a presentation, you almost break your neck trying to look around and see it. So I think that's something as a city we probably need to look at, you know, our event center and civic center, we do a lot of events there. Maybe we can look into pricing for that in the future. ADA sidewalks. I recently was in Charlton Plaza. That's one thing I like about the election, you get the block walk. And citizens will literally bring you around and show you every little detail of what may be wrong in the neighborhood. And in Charlton Plaza, you actually have sidewalks that the grass has taken over. You have sidewalks that don't even give you access, if you're in a wheelchair, to get up on the sidewalk. And it's an old lady that rides around out there in Charlton Plaza. Everybody knows her, call her Shirley Purley, out in the street. Because she can't even get on the sidewalks that we put in that community. I just think that's very unfortunate, and we need to get real aggressive about things like that because, God forbid, she ever get in an accident, that would be hit because we don't even have the access to her to even get on the sidewalks we put in. I really don't like that. I think we really need to look into that. I really don't like that, I think we really need to look into that. I also would like to see in the future, upcoming, if we can get a presentation on recreational plan for the future. I think we talked about recreational a lot. We even went into the magnitude this year that we separated parks and rags. So now with it being separated, I think there's ample amount of opportunity and time for that department to actually show us seriously plans and transition on where they want to go in the future. I'd like to see that pretty soon, on where we at and where we're going. And the youth council graduated, you know, I just want to, unfortunately, I couldn't make it. But our youth council graduated, and I want to congratulate them in front of everybody and let them know I'm proud of them, I appreciate them, and to the whole council, I thank y'all for allowing me to oversee that group. And congratulations to my people that's up there. And like I said, I have more to say to you next week, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Felschel.
Thank you, Mayor. I will reserve my comments also regarding the election for next week. But I will say today, happy birthday. I think your birthday was Sunday, and so just want to say happy birthday to you.
Councilmember Samuel.
Thank you, Mayor. Several things. One, I found out about a new son while going through this campaign. He is quite a character. But on a serious note, we do have a tremendous amount of good talent, young talent, and it just gives me joy to see them grow and develop, even though they can be kind of crazy at times. But yeah, thank you, son. And also, I want to say thanks to all the teachers. Two of the greatest people in my life were teachers, my mother and my father. I come from a family of teachers. I know the sacrifice that they make, and I know the pain that they receive. So I say thank you to all the teachers out there. Thanks to all the voters who went out and voted, those who voted with us, those that voted against us. That's what makes this system work, all people participating. But I also want to thank those who voted for me, giving their confidence in me to continue to work. I love Beaumont. I owe Beaumont a lot, because Beaumont has been good to me. And I look forward to the next two years in serving the people. I'm always trying to do better. There are times that I fall, but not because I don't care. I make mistakes, but I learn from them. I'll continue to try to serve you to the best of my ability. Mayor, we've served together for a long time. I've learned a lot from you. I say thank you for your service. You're a hell of a woman. Thank you.
Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say thank you, Mayor, for the time that you've given to the city. I know it's been many years, and your sacrifice to the city has been noticed, so just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kenneth Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things. Couple announcements. Tomorrow, the police are having a memorial read late at 9:00 AM over at the department. It's actually going to be on College Street because of the construction out front, so that's for everybody's calendar. And also, we have to reschedule the budget workshop, but the FUSIS is coming in to do a presentation, so they'll be in town, so Thursday afternoon, and I have to get that time again. If you haven't seen the presentation on the system that they're proposing for our crime prevention units, it'd be a great time to stop by and get a look at that and take a look at it. Sidewalks, sidewalks have been a big thing. I witnessed some of the same things you were talking about, Councilmember Turner, and we're, it's becoming a focus for us, not a factor. Councilmember Neal mentioned it to me today, and we are working on it, and we've already proposed dollars for the next year's budget and capital improvement plan to talk about sidewalks and sidewalks improvement. So that'll be a big thing for us going forward. And two, I'd like to commend Mayor Muton. You know, public service is one of the hardest things you could do in life. Sometimes I don't see how y'all do it. You know, it's one of the thankless jobs sometimes, but you sacrifice greatly for you and your family. So I'd just like to thank you, Mayor, for working with you the period of time I got to work with you. And I know it wasn't as long, it was fairly short, but thank you for the things that you do and the sacrifices you've made for the city of Beaumont.
Thank you. Attorney Reed.
Okay. So, and I just feel like it's important to respond to public comments so that it's clear for the record, and so I don't get an email from Tina telling me that we didn't respond. But if council, we are, staff is in the process of compiling the emails from Mr. Erding to present to council. However, as you know, council cannot have private meetings. When a quorum of council is present, it needs to be a public meeting. And this issue wouldn't meet the standard for an executive session that does allow for council to meet privately. So the options that council has, if that is the will of council, after reviewing the emails, is you could have a, have the item posted as a public hearing or as a discussion item on an upcoming agenda for a meeting, and then you could have that back and forth or that dialogue at that time. Council could also call a special meeting for that sole purpose. It would just be public and posted, meaning open to the public, and anyone could attend, and anyone could also speak on that item as well. As it relates to our emergency management plan, first, the emergency management plan is reviewed every, it was reviewed last September. Council has a briefing every May, so this council will also have a public briefing next week, actually, to review the plan. Every annex, and just for clarification for those at home before Councilman Turner asks me, an annex is the individual plans that make up the entire emergency management operations plan. So every annex is posted online for the public to review. There are currently five annex under review at the state. However, all of our annex and our entire emergency management plan has been reviewed and is in compliance. The evacuation plan, which is NXE for any person who would like to look that up, is posted online, and it's currently being resubmitted to the state for approval. That our emergency management plan, like I said, our team, rather, works very hard to make sure that we have successful notification processes, and they, you know, obviously have heard and will continue to do whatever council feels is in the best interest of the city. Lastly, as you know, you guys got to meet a lot of our BSNF railroad partners. When we did Triangle Trade Days in Austin, they continue to be a very supportive and a good partner with the city in discussions with them as it relates to pedestrian crossing. They are not in favor of putting pedestrian crossings at intersections or in locations that they feel will be dangerous or a danger to the public. If there are specific crossings that the council is interested in, we can reach out to them as it relates to that, but that is their stance, that if the crossing would present a danger to individuals, they are not in favor of supporting that. And lastly, the city cannot enforce restrictions for contracts between private parties. So if there is a contractual issue between, let's just say, HEB and a landowner, that would not be something that the city could enforce. That would be, since it is illegal, it's an interference of contract. And so there is nothing that the city could do, not even ordinance-wise, to prevent that in the future. That is something we can just say that we strongly discourage. But again, that's two private parties conducting business, and that's not the business of the city. And then to Mayor Muton, I just want to thank you for your service to the city. Thank you for being the first and carrying that with grace, and the way you led has ensured that there would not be, there would definitely be a second. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boone.
Thank you, Mayor. Not to belabor the emergency operation discussion, but I think Captain Ogilvy-Check touched on it, but I wanted to mention like weather radars, or excuse me, radios, in other words. Most of us have cell phones now, but you can also buy, I think, $30 or $40 a weather radio, which goes off in the case of a NOAA alert. So I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. And then last, Mayor Muton, just appreciate your many, many years and many, many hours of your service to our city. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis.
I also want to echo that, Mayor. I've worked with you for a short period of time, and I just want to thank you for the time that I've worked with you and your service to the city of Beaumont, and congratulations to all of the council members.
Thank you. Mr. Barkovia.
We are working with Tech dot on the crossing across Lucas by Helbig. They're going to do some safety improvements. It'll probably hit this summer, we think, but it's on their schedule. And as part of that, we've lobbied to include a pedestrian crossing, which they've agreed to at that spot. It'll be on one side of the road. Our part of that will be to tie the sidewalk to the crossing across the rail. So while we don't have a time, we do know that that will be put in place when they do those safety improvements.
Only Lucas Street for right now?
For right now. We're looking at the other ones, but it's a long process. We're working with the one on Fourth Street, because we're redoing the Fourth Street, as y'all know. But it's just a very involved, long process to get agreement. We were lucky on Lucas, and that Tech dot already had a funded safety improvement at that intersection, which made it a little easier to get that moving quicker in conjunction with Tech dot. So we are looking into that. And thank you for your service. I've enjoyed working with you.
Tina, oh, you weren't there, didn't you leave? Mr. Semino.
Mayor, I too want to thank you for your public service. I think I've been sitting here watching you for either six or eight years now, and I know it's eight, yeah. So I know it's a hard job, and so I just want to thank you for your service and wish you the best.
Thank you. And Ms. Bruce.
Mayor, I also want to thank you for, I've worked with you for eight years, not just in Watford, but as mayor, and I've watched you go from Watford to become a mayor, and it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with you, to watch you, to move the city forward. So I'm going to miss you, but I know you won't be a stranger. And I also want to thank the Jefferson County clerk, Roxanne, and her staff for the wonderful job they did helping us with the election. They did a fabulous job. We had a few hiccups, but other than that, it was a really good election. We had a great turnout, and so I just want to thank them for their help as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now it's down to my comments. First of all, I want to thank Legacy Christian Academy. You really got to see council in full effect today, and hopefully you learned something. Mr. Trayvon Trayhan, who is their teacher, you blended in, you look like a student. I kept looking, I don't know if you noticed, I was looking from the side, and I thought, where's the teacher? But if you'll please stand up so that we could applaud you and thank you. It's Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you so very much for bringing the students out. I think it's a great opportunity, especially for a government class, to see government in action. And we had a lot of dialogue today, so hopefully they got to see the process, and now they can understand relating it back to, well, y'all don't have books anymore, y'all have Chromebooks. So at least they get to relate it back to their studies. So thank you so very much for coming out. We appreciate that. Want to also recognize Mary Lake, Mr. West, that's in the audience on today, and congratulations. And also, I want to congratulate our youth council, and thank Councilmember Turner, that just from a conversation and ideal, Councilmember Samuel started the program and kicked the ball off, and then Councilmember Turner said, look, Mayor, I would love to take this ball and run with it. And we have a youth council that we were able to take to Washington DC, and the opportunity for them to be in a conference room with the President of the United States on their very first conference was awesome. I mean, I was, I was in shock myself, but for a student to be able to be in the room with the President of the United States, and you have to stand in these long lines and go through all of these scans and searches, but it's well, well worth it. And so I want to thank both of you for starting that and moving that forward. In addition to that, I omitted one of the names that could not be here today, one of my teachers, which was my first grade teacher, Mrs. Mary Wingate, who I conversate with on a regular basis and see her, but she is, was unable to attend today, so I will personally bring her certificate of appreciation. And I don't know if most of you are aware, but Ms. Alexis Morris was on the Jennifer Hudson Show, and because of a conversation that started on a Thursday evening, very, very late before we were off for Good Friday, Councilmember Turner said, look, we got to do a parade, we got to do something for the first female basketball athlete to win an NCAA championship from Beaumont, Texas. And last week, I was just shocked. I really wasn't paying attention, but Beaumont, Texas got national attention on the Jennifer Hudson Show because of Alexis Morris being drafted to the WNBA, the very first female from this area. And so that's something that Beaumont could be very, very proud of. She said, Jennifer said, I heard you got the keys to the city of Beaumont, Texas, and she was like, yeah, I did. And so that's something to be very, very proud of, and we were proud to present her with that and to reward good. A lot of times you hear of young people not doing such great things, but whenever we have an opportunity to reward one of our own, I definitely took advantage of those opportunities. And of course, this council hopefully will continue to do those type of things. I want to also say that I'm going to reserve most of my comments for next week, but it has been a joy and a pleasure to serve these past eight years, and that I love Beaumont, and I'm glad I had the opportunity to serve the citizens of Beaumont. And it does, it takes a lot of your personal time, a lot of your time away from your household and your family, and so I want to thank my husband and my family for the time that I was away in order to do those things. And so I'm gonna adjourn and say thank you for coming, and go out and spread the love. Thank you.